All right. Hello, everyone. It is November 12th, 7:00 PM. We'll call the City Council Regular Meeting to Order. Would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Dan Zander, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Most gracious God, I thank you for this time, for this get-together as a City Council meeting tonight. And we wanted to pray for our families, for our veterans, and for our schools, and for our East Point District. We pray for our people here tonight. We pray for our City Council tonight. Let this City Council be smooth meeting tonight. Our actions in our name, we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public with this name. One nation, under God, indivisible, reliving thee in justice.
Thank you very much, and we'll start off with a presentation from Ms. Sarah Frederick.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Sarah Frederick, and I am the Deputy Director with the Recreation Authority of Roseville and East Point. And I come here every couple of months just to kind of introduce some of our new programs, things that we have coming up, and just share all the fun things we're doing at the Rec Authority in hopes that we get more community members involved and to participate in our programs. If I could get it to work. There we go. All right, so what we're really trying to promote right now is our winter sports leagues. We have our winter basketball registration going on right now. We offer basketball leagues for children in second grade all the way up through high school for boys and girls. Our registration deadline is Sunday, December 29th, and we start the games the weekend of January 24th. So we actually don't start practices or anything until after the New Year. That way it gives families ample time to register, get done with the holidays, and once January 1 hits, we start with our basketball league and everything. So it is $95 per player, and it includes a weekly practice determined by the coach, jerseys, and an eight-week game schedule. Each year, we've added more and more players. We introduced the summer league this year that was very well received, and we're hoping to have around over 400 kids again participate in this league. So we're really pushing that registration. In addition, we have our winter volleyball league that we offer for sixth and eighth grade and high school. That also starts, you know, same weekend as basketball. Registration deadline is December 29th, and it's $95 per player. Pretty much the same setup as basketball and everything. They play on Sunday mornings. And last year, we had a really good turnout. I believe we had around eight teams in our middle school league and four for the high school. So it's definitely continuing to grow in popularity. So we're excited to see where registration goes for this year. And then our new newsletter will be coming out shortly. We just finalized it in the last week. So this will have programs that run through January through May. Amanda Hughes, our office manager, is the one who actually designs and typesets this. So with that, we've been able to say we have a lot of money on publishing costs and everything, and then also time in itself. We are able to do now three newsletters instead of two each year, and just to offer more programming, and also not have an issue that comes out in January with August programs in it. So we do them three times a year now. We have a few new events coming out as well. We're doing Feed the Dream, and we're partnering with Live Right. That's going to be our MLK event. In pretty much all the month of January, we're doing a food drive leading up till the weekend of MLK Day, and we're doing a craft event at the Rec. Some of our family fun trips, we're bringing them back. We're going to go to Detroit Pistons game. We're going to look into, or we are going to, instead of Kalahari this year, we're going to go to the Bavarian Inn because they have issued or introduced their new water park and everything this fall. So a lot of unique opportunities. And then we're doing a sledding and cocoa day, and that will be, of course, at the Spindler Sledding Hill. And then Earth Day event, we're both, we're partnering, I believe, with the library for that. And we are each library, East Point and Roseville Library, and we'll be doing events both in East Point and Roseville at the parks for Earth Day. So with that being said too with our newsletter, we just finalized it. It's in the printing stage right now. So once those are ready, we'll have them available at the Rec. We hand them out to the schools, and then we do bring copies over to like businesses and city halls and everything to pick up. But it will be available digitally as well. But yes, so this is my information. We still have some fall programs that are accepting registrations for, such as the basketball and volleyball programs. We also do have our VIP dance coming up in December. That will be on the 13th, and it will be at Barrister Gardens. That's our very important person dance. So it's kind of geared towards any family members, mom, son, dad, daughter, grandpa, granddaughter, whatever family unit would like to join that dance and everything. We have 180 tickets available. It includes a buffet dinner, very kid-friendly. I believe we're doing chicken tenders. So it's a really nice time for them. We've got a good DJ. We have crafts there. We're going to have open board games and everything because the theme is board games for that event. And we're doing ice cream sundae. So it's a really good event and everything for the families to attend. And we just wrapped up Big Bird Run this weekend as well. So for all those that either participated or helped with that planning, thank you. We had a really nice turnout despite the rainy Sunday. Rain did kind of stop and everything for the race, so that was nice. But we had around 295 runners for it and everything. So it was a really nice day and everything. So thank you to all who helped with that. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the council?
I just have a comment. I think it's wonderful that you guys offer sixth grade in particular sports for them because, as you are well aware, so many school districts don't offer that opportunity. So it's a great opportunity for them to participate in sports before they can actually join their school league in seventh and eighth grade and stuff, so.
And we really stress the wanting to, for us to be a feeder program to the schools as well because we have seen a decline in varsity sports and JV sports in the high school. So we really want them to get involved at like the elementary and middle school level to continue that passion and everything. Especially, I'm, you know, biased to female sports. I played sports growing up and everything too. So that ends me to see that on the decline and everything. So we're really working hard to get that back up.
Yes, I think it's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sarah, I think we said this before when you came last time, that we listen to you up there talking. We know that where your heart is, and your heart is at the recreation department, and your love for the kids, your love for what you do is, we can tell that. So thank you so much, and I know the people in the audience right now will give you a great big hand of applause.
Thank you. But yes, all right.
Thank you very much.
Well, yeah, you all have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you.
And next, we have a proclamation to recognize Kalia Monroe, which I don't believe is here. But Mr. DeMonico, did you want to speak to that, or? Oh, okay.
So, well, speaking of sports, we have a proclamation here for one of the students of East Point High School. She will see in the proclamation here that she has done quite some good track in the field in her tenure, and she still has one more year left. So without delay here, we've got our City of East Point proclamation recognizing the achievements of Kalia Monroe. Whereas Kalia Monroe started throwing shot put in the fifth grade, whereas Kalia considered not throwing shot put when she became a freshman in high school, but with little encouragement from her mother, and then she had a sister to help her competitive spirit and drive changed her mind. Whereas Kalia has been a state-qualified athlete for three years straight, is a three-year district champion, and a three-year county champion. And then whereas, my favorite part here, Kalia brought home a Division II state championship in shot put on June 1st as a junior. She not only threw her personal best of 45 feet, six inches, which is imagine how long it would be to shoot that. But that throw beat the defending champion's personal best of 45 feet, four inches. She also finished seventh in the discus with a throw of 124 feet, one inch, which is awesome. Kalia holds preschool records, two at East Point High School and one in Chippewa, where she attended previous East Point High School. Now therefore, the City Council, the City of East Point recognizes Kalia Monroe for accomplishments in track and field. Her claim is 12th day in November 2024.
Thank you. I think that deserves a.
I'll repeat that one more time. My mic wasn't on. No, I'm kidding. Hopefully you could hear me, I guess, out there. Probably be a little harder on YouTube. Sorry about that. But yeah, we recognize this young woman at, well, the Rotary Club recognized her at their last meeting, which was really nice. Got to meet her there. And it was fantastic, and her mother and her grandmother. So yeah, that was, that was pretty cool.
Thank you. And without delay, we'll move on to the roll call.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Here.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Here.
All right, and move on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Moving on to the hearing of the public, the first hearing of the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard? Anyone wish to be heard? Just come up here and state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Mark Schmier. I'm here because I know that we're, you know, the council's considering the recreational marijuana ordinance. I'm not a public speaker, and in the past, I've hired, you know, my attorney, Dave Ruto, to be here because he's very good at what he does, and this is a little nerve-wracking for me. You've seen me here before. Today, I wanted to try to perhaps personalize and in some ways humanize the process that we've gone through during this, you know, this entire marijuana process. I'm a simple guy that has a family. I've got twin daughters that are struggling musicians in Los Angeles. They're Midwest hard-working girls, and basically, I'm just like everybody else in this room. I can tell you that from day one, our intentions were good. We started this process in 2019 when we optioned a building on grass in anticipation of a medical marijuana ordinance. At the time, medical marijuana sales made up about 50% of the market. At that point in time, we were full speed ahead, and we could have survived with medical only. With hard work and a great plan in place, we were approved because of both mine and my partner's experience in the cannabis business and a great location in my 37 years of development experience. And during those 37 years, I had one motto. It was do it right, sleep at night. Being at a meeting like this was not my forte. It was really getting things done in the field and doing it with quality, on time, and do it right, sleep at night. We immediately started working with McKenna and Associates, our engineers, designers, architects, planners, with optimism. We purchased our building and discovered asbestos and immediately spent the money necessary to remediate and clean up the contamination. We gave to local charity. By the time we went through the process and obtained special land use approvals, the medical market had dropped by 80%. It had originally been 50% of the market. The process of planning is difficult and doesn't always move smoothly. As it turns out, moving forward without recreational and only medical would have been terrible for the community, not only the workers that we want to hire. They would have been hired and then had to have been let go, which would have been because of the medical conditions in the market.
You have 30 seconds.
I can tell you that it would be devastating to me and my family personally to not move forward with recreational. The building we purchased cost double what its value is. We spent over $800,000 and thousands of hours of our time, my time. From 2019 till today, we've had some milestones. We've had some tragedies, including a death in the, someone in our office, which resulted in the delay of the paying of our taxes by about one month because we simply didn't realize they hadn't been paid. Life has been a challenge for us all in the last three or four years. I'm hoping that you realize you're dealing with people and not a big corporation.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Yes, if you, hold on just for one moment, so. Sorry, thank you.
Really good? Okay. Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. I just have a kind of quick question. I know you're doing the special land use review for Keystone Auto Clinic today, and I was actually at the planning commission meeting on October 3rd when they approved the special land use, which I agree with because right now it's basically a gravel lot, and Keystone is wanting to pave it and make it a parking lot. I'm just kind of, this last sentence or so in the planner's review talking about that omitted from the planning commission's recommendation is condition number four, the misstorage of operable vehicles in the parking lot. It wasn't omitted. The planning commission intentionally removed that requirement from their approval of the special land use. They don't want inoperable vehicles in that parking lot at any time. But I think the planning commission, the way they explained it, was that because City Planner is requiring the business to allot 10% of their parking to the public, which I, the planning commission wasn't really on board with, but City Planner pushed for that, that they shouldn't be penalized if there's public vehicles that are sitting there for 24 hours. Their business license shouldn't be attached to that. You know, I think it was Commissioner Yulinski brought up, you know, example, if someone on Chestnut Street is having a party and their partygoers are using that parking lot, the public spots, and they leave their car there overnight or leave their car there for a couple of days or whatever. What this is saying is that there shouldn't be any vehicles there for more than 24 hours and that the business owner would be penalized and potentially have his business license revoked if this happened continuously. So it kind of seems like, you know, you have to pick a lane here. Either make the parking lot private, which I think most businesses, don't they have private parking? That, you know, they don't allow public parking after business hours. You know, I just kind of wanted clarification on that because I think it's kind of unfair to the business owner. Regardless of what transpired before, right now you have a lot that's just gravel. So anything that he does to it is going to be an improvement to the community, and I don't think that we should make it harder for him to do what he's trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else?
Karen Murray, Agent, East Point, resident. On Election Day, a mirror was held up to this country showing misogyny, racism, xenophobia, a convicted felon, an election denier, a malignant narcissist bent on retribution and revenge against any and all opponents. Twice deemed mentally unfit to serve by the mental health profession. Twice impeached, responsible for wrecking a bipartisan deal over the summer in regards to immigration that even the Border Patrol agent said, yes, this is what we want. Bullying, an insurrectionist, someone who has referred to fallen armed members, armed service members as suckers and chumps and losers. This is a fan, an avid fan of dictators. This is somebody who plans to get rid of the Constitution. This is a rapist. I'm sorry. The sexual assault is watering down what he did. He's responsible for the children being separated from parents in 2020 to where they were like, we can't find the kids. And there's so much more. So instead of being appalled by this, those who voted for them clearly drank the Kool-Aid. Gallon after gallon. Vat after vat. Their reckless decisions were to only focus on themselves and not, as John Stuart Mills taught, about the greater of the good. In other words, we don't just think about ourselves. We have to think about our decisions and the ballots that we cast. Is this going to benefit society as a whole, or is it just going to benefit your damn pocketbook? Because this reckless vote just told every little girl in this country, you don't matter. Your life doesn't matter. Your choices don't matter. Your voice doesn't matter. I have a 30-year-old niece. I pray she does not get pregnant. I have a nephew who is trans. I worry about him. Unless you are a straight, white male in this country, you got nothing to worry about. The rest of us do. What are the constitutional law professors going to teach now? There's no longer Starry Decisis. He made sure that was obliterated when his handpicked Supreme Court justices made sure to overturn Roe v. Wade. This, this is evil. Evil showed up at the ballot box.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Seeing none, the first hearing of the public is closed, and we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Item A, regular meeting from October 15, 2024.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would move to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of October 15, 2024.
I'll second that.
Your choice on who seconded. Please call the roll.
Okay. I heard Councilmember DeMonico. Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
All right, item B, closed session, meeting minutes, October 15, 2024.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion, we approve the closed session meeting minutes of October 15, 2024.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, item C, special meeting minutes from October 29, 2024.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion, we approve the special meeting minutes of October 29, 2024.
Support.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
We'll move on to scheduled hearings. Item A, public hearing for selection of CDBG competitive bricks and mortar projects. And there's information in the agenda about it. This is a public hearing only related to this item. So with that, the public hearing is open. Would anyone like to speak specifically to the selection of the CDBG competitive bricks and mortar projects? All right, seeing none, that hearing is closed. There is no unfinished business. We'll move on to reports from administration. We'll start with our city manager's report. Ms. Walton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to start by acknowledging and sending sincere thank you to all of our staff that have assisted with elections. We have incredible election inspectors that now for nine days of early voting are with us, which we have some of them in the audience now, that are with us for nine days, that, you know, we have absentee counting board that is here an entire day, and an in-house office, clerk's office, that is absolutely incredible, day in and day out, working overtime and extremely long nights to ensure that we have a safe and secure election. So I really, really appreciate all of those efforts and the entire community coming together to ensure that we could do that. Second, I'd like to introduce Sanchez, our animal control officer. She's here in the back. She has joined us with an incredible amount of experience across multiple states, multiple counties, and on top of that, all of her efforts privately and personally in the animal control and safety for, for animals in our community and many communities around. So thank you, Sanchez. We appreciate you being here, and we've already recognized your incredible efforts in East Point. And next, I'd like to highlight rain barrels. I know that's been a very big conversation, and people are anticipating those and the delivery of them. We did receive the rain barrels today from Macomb County, so we're appreciative for their partnership. The DPW is actually scheduling pickup for those, so we're doing those in batches throughout the week. So this week, we have a few pickups starting on Friday, and it'll continue into next week until those barrels are all picked up. We have a splash pad survey out, so as council had mentioned before, an in- We have a splash pad survey out, so as council had mentioned before, an interest in getting feedback on different water features. We have some videos that are posted on that survey as long as getting some feedback about the specific features that are there. We have great feedback already, but we're keeping it up for another week to try and increase that engagement. So if you can share your feedback, if you have family members that are going to attend and visit that splash pad, give us the feedback and let us know what they'd like. We're planning to bring that forward to city council to make decisions on those features next week. Our tree lighting ceremony is scheduled for December 4th at 6:30 PM. Again, you can bring your family. We'll have wonderful music, maybe not from city council this year, we'll have wonderful music.
Whoa, whoa, wait. Oh, hang on.
I didn't say your music wasn't wonderful, it just wouldn't be from council this year.
Cut her mic.
So you can join us. Santa Claus will also be here and Mrs. Claus. So join us again, December 4th at 6:30 PM for the tree lighting ceremony. And we have the board and commission mixer coming up as well on December 12th at 6:00 PM. That is to celebrate all of our board and commission members that have served over the past year. Come out and join us and celebrate each other and encourage others to apply to some boards and commissions. For those that have not applied yet, applications are out. We have some openings, so if you're interested in serving and joining us on a board or commission and helping to move things forward, please apply, submit your application so we can move forward and get you a part of our team in moving things on. So with that, Mayor and Council, I can answer any questions you may have outside of the music.
Does anyone have any questions?
No, I don't think so.
All right, well then we'll move on to our finance director's report, Mr. Blum.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That sounded like something I'd do. I'm actually just gonna gloat. My staff won the Halloween decoration event here at City Hall. They put in a lot of time and effort and I had very little involvement, but they won. So other than that, I've got enough agenda items, I really don't have anything extra.
All right, any questions for Mr. Blum? All right, we'll move on to our city attorney's report, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just a reminder to the public, the city council will be conducting another special meeting regarding its review of proposed adult-use recreational marijuana ordinance. That meeting again will be next Tuesday beginning at 5:30 here in council chambers. Council's also in receipt of my monthly staff's report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Albright?
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to new business. Item A, approval, approved recommendation of planning commission for special land use at 22100 Grashit. Would anyone like to open up, to speak to this or open up with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, was the applicant here or did we want to have our?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. And then, did we want to give a quick, brief, I guess we've got one question at least in here that we want to address, maybe, I don't know if the questions are specifically for you, sir, I was just curious if you were here or from the building department, if we want to talk about the one item from the memo from Ms. Wolf about the difference between the planning commission's motion and what was recommended by that?
Yes. I guess who do you want to ask to address that?
I guess Ms. Wolf, I guess.
If you can.
Sure, yeah, I can give an introduction to the issue at hand. So the applicant is requesting a special land use for, to create a parking lot adjacent to their building. And the request has been reflected to provide for customer parking and employee parking, which does align and can be considered as a special land use within the downtown district. However, what myself and the building department do not want and want to prevent is from the lot being utilized as outdoor storage rather than being utilized as customer and employee parking. So we do have specific guidelines around it in the ordinance, but we, I know have in other instances, when we anticipate future issues, we do tie it to the business license. So that is the question here is, do we take further measures to prevent from the misuse of the parking lot, having it be tied to their business license? Or otherwise, it would have to go through the code enforcement method and timeline? And so again, we would, again, it's just a way to provide further ability within this situation. So planning commission did agree that inoperable vehicles is pretty clear, we don't want it to be utilized or appear as though it is a, like a junkyard, not even as outdoor storage. So the question is, do we see it necessary to tie for the inability to have outdoor storage as part of their business license? And I'm happy to talk through any of the other conditions, but those were to be in greater alignment in meeting the master plan, preventing and mitigating hazard from adjacent properties and being in line with the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
And then I guess, yeah, can I, one question then for the applicant, I guess to be fair, I assume that then with this discussion at the planning commission, your intent wasn't to turn, you know, parking lot and do a parking lot of cars that you're eventually servicing then, or what was?
So I needed the parking lot for more of a safety issue than really a parking lot to park cars. If you look at my building and you look at the entrance off of Grashit, I have too many customers that park right off of Grashit, making it a very hazardous situation when they're getting out of the car, walking into my facility. Car's been hit, people have been ran over. I mean, it's, it's really detrimental that I get this parking lot, more of a safety standpoint than really a parking issue. It's just, it's getting pretty bad on Grashit. Nobody really follows the laws, driving up and down Grashit. You know, you have people hitting 50, 60, 70 miles an hour at time, smacking cars, hitting people. So really my concern is making sure my patrons come in, they enter safely, they get into my facility safely. I have no intention of leaving any cars parked on the facility. As you can see, the parking lot's been cleared for probably three months. I want it as clear as possible. I have no intention of leaving any abandoned vehicles in the lot. It just doesn't look good on my facility. So that's the real reason why I'm getting this parking lot more of a safety, you know, situation than me parking cars, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And can you say your name?
Sure, my name is Gus.
Thank you. All right. Did anyone else have any other questions or anything to add? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I guess Mr. Mayor, I guess no one has any other comments then. I'll make a motion to grant conditional, yeah, so this will take a second here. Grant conditional approval of the proposed special land use for a parking lot at 22100 Grashit Avenue with the parcel number here in the agenda packet. Based on the findings of fact in the planner's review letter dated September 26, 2024, and contingent on the following, to be harmonious with the master plan and existing character, the project must provide enhanced screening and landscaping beyond site plan requirements. This includes, but it's not limited to, the addition of landscaped islands and a screening wall that consists of a masonry screening wall and landscape screening, landscaping screen. To be harmonious with the master plan, the project must follow the businesses within, sorry, must allow the businesses within the block to the north of the site to park at the parking lot. To be an improvement to the community, project must designate at least 10% as public parking spaces. Number four, to ensure that the use is not disruptive and does not create excessive cost to public services, the project must provide a note on the site plan, understanding that parking of inoperable vehicles in the newly constructed parking lot will result, or wait, hold on, so, actually, I was gonna leave this part out, I think, sorry about this. I thought that was the last sentence, so I'm gonna pause that if you don't mind, Mr. Albright. Was number four, I thought it was that last sentence, so number four is to, revocation. So yeah, we're arguing, I was gonna go with the planning, sorry about my voice here, with the planning commission's recommendation, but this is...
Councilmember, would you like me to clarify?
Yeah, is this?
The italicized language is the planning commission recommendation. So they did recommend to at least tie the inoperable vehicle as part of the business license, but not just, but not operable storage of vehicles.
Okay, yes, now I...
So the italicized, yeah, is their recommendation.
And it's, it's the same as the recommended motion part of the packet too, right? I thought, okay. Okay. And Mr. Albright, I'm just gonna continue then, reading as if I didn't have that break there, sorry, everybody. I'll start, number four, to ensure that the use is not disruptive and does not create excessive cost to public services, the project must provide a note on the site plan, understanding that parking of inoperable vehicles in the newly constructed parking lot will result, will result in the revocation of 22130 Grashit's business license, the adjacent vehicle repair facility and the site plan and special land use for 22100 Grashit. And to be consistent with the zoning ordinance, the project must receive site plan approval, which will address the inoperable vehicles stacked and parked in the parking lot on the east side of the site and the vehicles parked within the alley.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
All right, any other questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Shadlick?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item B, approved recommendation of planning commission for special use of, for special land use at 24935 Grashit.
Someone else should read that one.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would, would move to approve the recommendation from the planning commission. Would you like to, for me to read the content of their motion?
All right. Mr. Albright, do we typically need to have that? I think we usually have it read into the record.
Sure. I would move to grant, to grant conditional approval of the proposed special land use for an events space at 24935 Grashit, 24130226041, based on the findings of fact in the plans, planner's review letter dated October 30, 2024, with the following conditions. Number one, an automatic sprinkler system is installed or the occupancy per event is lower to 100 people, guests and employees or less. And number two, alcohol should not be served on the premises unless there is an appropriate liquor license or one is obtained.
Is there support?
I'll second.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Shadlick?
Yes.
Item C, approval of projects for the 2025 McComb County Community Development Lot Grant Bricks and Mortar Program. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I had one very brief question. I just wanted to triple check here for this. We are saying the reconstruction and not resurfacing, right, of Wilmot Semerata Stevens and the concrete patching of Nevada, Topher to Ash?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay, because I think one, at one point, it said resurfacing instead, so I just wanted to double check that. That was my only question.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we approve this middle of Wilmot Avenue for reconstruction from Semerata Stevens as priority number one, and Nevada Avenue for concrete patching from Topher to Ash as priority number two, to the McComb County Competitive Brick and Mortar Grant Program for 2025 Community Development Lot Grant, our CDBG funds, and further authorize city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Support.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Item D, approve projects for the 2026 McComb County Community Development Lot Grant Program. Did anyone have any questions for this one?
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
I have a couple questions. So with respect to the Phlox Avenue for concrete patching from Haas to Ten Mile, you know, if you're familiar with that area, which you and I definitely are, that area floods all the time. So I'm just, I'm just curious why we would have suggested the, that is like a secondary as a priority number two. I think maybe that's for Mr. Carr to answer.
I think looking at the streets that we have on the priority list for CDBG, that we based it upon the actual surface condition of the road, we chose Lexington as priority number one, as the surface of the road is, was rated worse than Phlox. With Phlox, we would be looking at it, even though it's a concrete patching and not a full reconstruct, we're proposing, we would be looking at the drainage and doing any improvements to the drainage system as necessary as part of that project as well.
So that would include the drainage, is that what you're saying on?
We, we would, yeah, we would consider drainage on Phlox as well as part of that project, yes.
Any other questions? Did anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve this, Lexington Avenue Concrete Reconstruction from Nine Mile to Semerata as priority number one, and Phlox Avenue Concrete Patching from Haas to Ten Mile as priority number two, to the McComb County Competitive Brick and Mortar Grant Program for 2026, CDBG funding and further authorize city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Is there support?
I'll second that.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, item E, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 24-1243, workforce housing pilot for Kelly Road Project.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve and adopt ordinance number 24-1243, an East Point workforce housing pilot for the 21704 to 21718 Kelly Road Project with the change recommended by administration.
I'll second.
And I believe administration's also requesting that inserted with that motion language, there be a, I think a little further up, sponsor shall remit annual pilot payments to state treasurer no longer than September 1st.
Yes, yeah, including that.
Including that? All right.
Still support?
Still support?
Yeah.
All right, checking. All right, any questions? Please call the, call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilman Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Moving on to item F, adoption of resolution 24-1993, and approve restricted covenant workforce housing pilot for the Kelly Road Project. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Shadlick?
Yes.
All right, item G, approve extension of emergency medical response ALS and transportation services. Would you like to make a motion?
I would move to approve the final renewal option of the contract for emergency medical response and transportation services for an additional two-year period that expires on December 31, 2026, and further authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
All right, are there any questions on that item? Please call the roll.
Councilman Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Item H, approval of budget amendment BA 25-02.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the budget amendment BA 25-02 as presented.
Second that.
All right, did anyone have any questions? I know there were some questions asked via email. Did anyone have any additional questions? All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Item I, approval of creation of uh delinquent special assessments, can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, motion we authorize the finance director to place delinquents special assessments on the twenty-twenty-four winter taxes as requested by the finance director.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Prashadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, item J, discussion of retiree healthcare changes, um, Mr. Plum, did you want to kind of open up or comment on this?
Sure. Um, as mentioned previously and as part of the budget amendment, the uh Medicare Advantage plans were modified by the federal government. Um, the our previous policies with them had a thirty-eight-hundred-dollar-per-year uh annual out-of-pocket prescription drugs. It's now been limited to two-thousand dollars. Um, that has resulted in an increase in cost to the city, uh, it will be hang on, let me get my readers back in. Um hundred and, almost a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for next calendar year, uh, increase in cost. What it means is that when someone goes from pre-Medicare to post-Medicare, they actually get an enhancement in their benefit uh at the cost of the city. So uh I'm just asking permission to look at some alternatives um that we could look at changing retiree healthcare coverage. It would most likely involve increasing some deductibles in non-prescription drug areas to bring our costs down and try to keep the out-of-pocket cost similar to the uh pre-Medicare cost for the retirees. Um, any changes would be brought back to council for approval, and none of the changes can go into effect until January of twenty-six. That's why I have to start looking at the changes now, get things in place. Uh, it has to be decided probably by May of next year if we're gonna change anything for a January twenty-six effective date.
Okay, I, I don't know if you need a, a motion, well, I guess you're
Just kind of
seeking it so you know how, that you're not wasting your, spinning your wheels, yeah. Um okay, does anyone have questions related to that?
Sure, I've got a couple of quick questions. So are other cities then uh having this same issue?
Uh, anybody that has Medicare Advantage would have the same issue. Um, and so any, and not everybody does Medicare Advantage. A lot of cities will just recover retirees until they hit Medicare eligibility and then they drop them. Um, even an individual who was paying out of pocket and didn't have a retiree coverage, they've been impacted as well. Um, so it's anybody on Medicare has had this impact.
I guess just with the percentage increases you're you're showing us here with the I'm just surprised I haven't heard like MML or uh the NLC or something, um, since this would affect the whole country
Yeah.
uh, talking about this. And kind of the point of the Inflation Reduction Act was to help with healthcare costs, not increase them unless I guess it's one-sided? Are we, are you trying to say?
Yeah, 'cause the federal government reduced how much they're gonna subsidize the plans. So federal government's saving money. And then they reduced the out-of-pocket for retirees, which only helps them if somebody else is paying the premium. So the people, I mean, some people buy individual plans and they're, they've been impacted by this as well.
Are we negotiating like drug costs and things like that, uh, shouldn't the premium side reduce also, but I-
It still comes to the out-of-pocket cost that we want, I mean, basically the city is picking up eighteen-hundred dollars a year in out-of-pocket costs that the retiree used to pay for.
So then what, uh, I guess, what are you possibly looking into then? Like, how are we gonna, you know, if this is the quote, what are, what are, what's like another option?
We have uh Manquin uh who handles the uh healthcare, and basically, I'm if you guys prove it, I will talk to them about looking at some alternatives um where we can modify uh a co-pay or deductible that's not prescription-related and has not been impacted by this change. A lot of them still have the five-hundred-dollar deductible, maybe it's just a matter of moving them to the seven-fifty, which is still gonna be less out-of-pocket than thirty-eight-hundred in prescription drugs, so. It's just looking at what's available out there.
All right, um, any other questions? I guess, uh, I don't think we had a motion on the table, did we?
No.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Uh, but, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I would, I would move to authorize Finance Director Blum to investigate potential changes to retiree healthcare coverage.
Support.
All right, um, any other questions on it? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Shadlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Uh, yes. Uh, item K, schedule fiscal year twenty-four audit meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I would move a, a special meeting for the city council on Tuesday, December third, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M for the purpose of reviewing the fiscal year-end June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four audit.
Second.
All right, any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Prashadlik?
Yes.
All right, uh, item um L, adopt resolution twenty-four dash nineteen ninety-two, uh, setting city council twenty-five meeting dates.
I'll support that.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Prashadlik?
Yes.
Thank you, oh, and just, I just wanted to say thank you for adjusting for the MML dates.
Um, item M, uh, I think we were all there this, this year, weren't we?
Yes.
Yes, I think we're the only city that had, had everyone there. Um, item M, approval, uh, approved removal of a member from the Beautification Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I would um move to accept and approve the recommendation from the Beautification Commission for removal of said member.
I'll second.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Prashadlik?
Yes.
All right, payroll and bills, uh, would anyone like to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we pay the bills in the amount of four million, four hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I'll second that.
All right, uh, does anyone have question on, uh, questions on those? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Prashadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the second hearing of the public, the second hearing of the public is now open, would anyone like to be heard?
Good evening, council, Mary Hall Rayford, uh, East Point resident. Um, I almost didn't make it 'cause I had a headache, but this was something important. Odd Fellows, um, right down the street, four ninety-six, is looking for donations of toys for our annual Christmas party for kids. The party is scheduled for December eighth, and we need unwrapped gifts because someone at the lodge always wraps them um by November twenty-seventh. So I came to make this plea to the public because we don't want to disappoint kids that we know, we have at least a hundred showing up for this Christmas party, uh, basically from ages five to twelve or thirteen. So, for the general public, if you are so kind, please bring your unwrapped gift to Odd Fellows on Grashit, right down the street from City Hall, and we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Thank you, Craig Wodecki, two things. Uh, something on the light side, the library this weekend, starting Thursday, and continuing through Saturday, we'll have a used book and media sale. There are two big rooms full of books and probably another room full of DVDs. So come on down and uh expand your minds. Secondly, just to thank you, um, manager Walton mentioned how early voting went, and as you all heard, it was somewhat chaotic. But I just want to say thank you to the citizens because they came out and they were very patient, and I don't think of any complaints from any of the election workers, that there were any issues from a voter having to wait. They were very patient, very orderly, and um, thank you, citizens, and uh looking forward to another early voting. Thanks, good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. Um, just wanted to thank you for supporting Planning Commission's recommendation. I have no affiliation with Keystone Auto Clinic, you know, know nothing about them, but I just feel, and I know I've spoken on this before, that I know that the city needs to rely on outside firms, engineering firms, planning firms, um, to help us, you know, do our jobs. But these people don't all work or live in this city or use this city or um are as familiar with this city as residents are or our boards and commissions, which I believe are all East Point residents. So, you know, my concern with um the issue with Keystone Auto Clinic is that it, it just seemed like our city planner was trying to supersede um the recommendation of the Planning Commission. And I've, I've been going to Planning Commission meetings, they all seem very competent and very involved in the city, and um, you know, if, if they're making a recommendation, um, I don't feel that it's appropriate for an outside agency to try and sway you in a different direction. Um, if, if, you know, they don't have the support of the commission, so anyways, that's it, thank you, and I'm, it's a short meeting tonight, have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi, Cindy Federley, I want to piggyback on the comments about the Keystone. I live at Veronica and Grashit and on Collinson and Grashit, there are two businesses that are junkyards. And it looks awful. There has been, at the auto repair shop, there's been a vehicle parked on the sidewalk on Collinson, next to the business, since a week ago Sunday. Uh, not been moved at all, I've seen them working on it with the hood up and they've got a toolbox out there, but that's not acceptable, if I want to go for a walk, I have to walk in the street to get past that business. It looks like junkyards, I don't know what the ordinances are, but the building where Dana's Dairy Delight used to be on the south side of Collinson and Grashit is all junk cars and vehicles, and it's, looks horrible. So I'm glad that we're not gonna have another junkyard on Grashit near me, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening, council, mayor. I just wanted to thank uh Robin Underwood, I don't know how much chaos it was in the election, but she did a great job concerning all of the precincts. We were precinct number five, we had over six hundred people that showed up. Also, our chairperson, Brandon, did a great job of keeping everything together and phone calls and all. And second of all, I'd like to thank you for granting that also, um, recommendation for the Planning Commission over on Grashit, he's a personal friend of mine, and he does a great job as far as hall rentals. I participated in some of his events and they go long quarter- excuse me, they go long accordingly, so again, thank you.
Thank you, can you state your name for the record, please?
Raymond Clayton, Jr.
Thank you. I know whoever does the minutes gets, gets mad at me if I forget to ask that, so. Um, all right, would anyone else wish to be heard?
So in addition to my previous comments, there were those who, through their votes, decided they were going to shove their religious beliefs down everybody else's throat. They're your religious beliefs, they're not shared. You do not tell women what we can and cannot do with our bodies, they're our bodies, not yours. You don't believe in abortion, don't have one, period. Again, those are your religious beliefs, they're not shared. This fiasco, this part two of reliving the two thousand sixteen nightmare, where we had a chance to have our first woman president was pissed away once again. There's not gonna be any more teaching kids right from wrong. What a horrible example to set for the kids. 'Cause kids are gonna, you know, learn about this, they're gonna look at it and went, well, what, he got away with it, why can't I? You know? What about people who believe good will always prevail over evil? Yeah, nope. That, that got shot to hell in the election. And the tariffs, good luck with that. Because if you think everything's expensive now, when he gets those tariffs kicking in, you're gonna pay far more than what you're paying now, everybody is. And then let's not forget, the countries will retaliate and they'll impose their own tariffs on the goods the United States exports. Everybody wants to complain about inflation, everything's so much more expensive, you can't say you were better off, you know, these last four years, blah, 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 blah. Well, let's take a look at inflation, there's, you know, quite a few factors involved there. When there's a demand for higher wages and everybody was demanding, I want twenty bucks an hour, but yet you had no college education, all right, so if you get your twenty bucks an hour, well, guess what? Higher wages equals higher prices, because that's gonna be passed on to the consumers. The pandemic turned the entire world upside down. The supply chain shortage, anytime you have a shortage of supplies, you got that high of a demand, yeah, prices are gonna go up. President Biden did a damn good job, so this isn't about blaming the Democrats. The blame is on those who are so damn selfish, they didn't think about their actions and how this is going to impact the rest of the country. You know, we just heard about the finance director and the report.
Thank you.
Who knows if that's even gonna exist next year? I'll leave you with this, remember, that SOB said, don't worry, folks, you only have to war, vote once. So
Thank you.
Thanks for pissing away democracy.
Would anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Seeing none, the second hearing of the public is closed, uh, we'll move on to mayor and council reports, um, Mr. DeMonico.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, uh, just want to talk about the, um, I guess the, the Planning Commission's special land use discussion. I think it happened exactly as it should, I think, you know, our planner gives um her best recommendations about what she thinks um the city should do. Planning Commission debates it, and then, that's why you guys voted us up here to make the uh hard decision at that point. And everybody just had to figure out if they liked what the Planning Commission said, they liked what the planner said, or something in between, neither, whatever. And so I, I think um everybody, I guess, did their part on that. Um, I do want to thank all the election workers also, thank you, it is grueling hours, I mean, I certainly don't take part in those grueling hours, so thank you, everyone else who does. Um, I'm not working the election, so thank you all, I know it's a lot of time. Thank, thank you, Mr. Wodecki, I know you're here and I know I saw you at uh early voting, so I'm, I'm thanking you, since you're right in front of me here. Um, and uh I want to s, I want to say it was real nice at Rare, uh, we had Sarah Frederick uh earlier talking about some things going on there, but the other day there was the unveiling of a quote um for Connor McMahon who used to work at Rare, but unfortunately was killed by a drunk driver, and there's a nice quote up now on the wall, if you walk in the front door, you'll see it right up on the wall when you um walk in. Uh, that was a real nice little ceremony, his mom and dad and his brother were there. They gave him a quilt with all of his T-shirts um from all the summer camps he's done. from all the summer camps he's done. And they had like bracelets with the quote on it. So that was real nice. Also, and I guess I didn't expect our animal control officer to be here, but I happened to meet her because I took home a stray dog from, actually speaking of RARE, a RARE event, where you tumble all the pumpkins down the, down the hill there. Somebody, there were some kids playing with stray dog. Someone else noticed this and was like, yeah, I'll help out. And then she brought the dog over. And then, long story short, I guess the police department couldn't come pick it up. So I took the puppy home and stayed the night with me. And fortunately, thank you to our animal control officer for calling later that night and taking care of the dog. He, or she, I should say, was outside for quite some time. So I'm glad she'll be better. Pumpkin, I'm calling her. I named your pumpkin since it was the, you know, pumpkin roll-down event, you know? Will be better, find a home eventually. A friend offered to adopt. Hopefully that works out. And then, yeah, just one more thing. Of course, the election's over. You know, I know everybody, you know, has that on their mind. Regardless of your own preferred outcome, you know, I know it's on your mind. You know, I'm not happy with the outcome. Regardless, I think we all can do our own thing, make a positive difference in the community. You know, forget if things are not going well here or there for a minute. Just keep improving things as you can. You know, make sure you stand up to bullies when confronted. You know, make sure you show people how to find the good in things. You know, when maybe someone's only finding all the bad and everything. You know, make sure you're always telling the truth. Make sure you're just being the best you, you know? I think that's kind of all we can do. So, yeah, if you're listening to this, I guess I'll pitch, there's plenty of things to do here in the city. We got lots of boards and commissions with openings. Help out there. Just come out to city events, speak at hearing of the public. Thank you to all of you out there right now that spoke. And shoot, run for city council. Do something. Run for something. So that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Proshadlik?
I'd like to echo the same sentiments with respect to the election. I know we had positive feedback about our process that we had here at the city and how well up the workers had done. So I'd like to commend those workers and thank them for their service to our community. And thank everyone who came out and voted. That was great to see so many early voters. I was standing out at the polls at one point for the early voting. And it was amazing to see how many people were coming out on the weekend just to come vote early. So it was really nice. And secondly, I'd like to commend the Rotary Club for their efforts. They had a, an event on Sunday, I know you were there, that was benefiting Gianna House. And it was a very nice, nice event. They ran it very well, and so it goes to a good cause. I'd like to thank them for their service for our community. And again, I'll piggyback on what you had said about getting involved. I mean, the Rotary Club is another excellent example. Ms. Hall Rayford had mentioned Odd Fellows. They do good, so much good in our community. So if you are interested, please reach out to those, those groups and get involved. It's always, always welcome. The help is always welcome. And that's all I have.
All right. Councilman Curly?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank, belated thank you to all the veterans that served. I don't know how many of you in the audience served, but thank you. The other thing I want to ask all of you to do, those of you who are watching, those who are here tonight, when you see a veteran, and I don't care if it's at a restaurant or waiting in line to go to a movie or walking the streets, it would be great if you went up and said, excuse me, thank you for your service. But the other one I want you to do, when you see somebody with a cap with Vietnam on it, what I do all the time, and I would encourage all of you to do it, you go up, excuse me, sir, I just want to thank you for your service. But there's something else I want to say to you, that I know that no one said this to you when you came home. And that's welcome home. And I can't tell you how many times I did that. And with tears in their eyes, they said, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Thank you. Me and Councilman Devonico had some similar comments, but he beat me to them today. No, I was just going to say thank you to those that worked the election, everybody that had a hand in it. I did early vote as well. And I think it takes a special dedication to give your time to make sure things go smoothly. So I want to thank you for that. To our animal control officer, welcome. I also made it to the event, the rare, the unveiling of the quote of the young man that was killed by a drunk driver. And it was nice to see the support for the family. We offer condolences to them and, you know, just encourage them to lean on those that are close to them and that will offer support. And, you know, there have been a lot of conversations about just different things going on in the world. No matter what, whether it's around election time or any other time, my encouragement to everyone, and I try to practice this myself, and that is to be the change that I want to see in the world. And I would extend that to you all, is to be the change that you want to see. If you want to see kindness, love, peace, goodness, then make sure you do your part to put that out. And if we all do it, it just makes the world that much better. That's all I got.
Thank you. I don't want to repeat what everyone said, so I'll just say quickly, thanks to our election workers. I know that it's always a long week at City Hall, the week of an election. Thank you to everyone who went out and voted, regardless of how you voted. It's just important to get out there and vote. And the thing that I want to mention about, that hasn't been mentioned yet, is tomorrow, the SEMSD and SMDA, which are our sanitary district and our disposal authority, are having a groundbreaking or ribbon-cutting at our new building, which is located just on the other side of 94 at the end of Stevens. It's kind of exciting. I'm very excited about it. It starts at 3:00 PM. So anyone who can make it, I would encourage you to go there just to check out the new facility. They oversee sort of all our sewage flow and manage our disposal waste. And it's really up to the people that work there to make sure that our water doesn't, when it's raining heavy, our sewage doesn't overflow into the lake. And it's a very complicated system. We have a new building. It's very exciting. So I encourage people, 3:00 PM, to be there if they can make it. And that's all I have. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
There we go.
I'll support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly? Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Proshadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Devonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeldt?
Yes. Meeting adjourned at 8:14 PM.